This is a regular meeting of the city council for the city of Trinidad. If you have cell phones, please silence them. I see everybody took their caps off. Thank you. Would you all please stand for part two?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is roll call. DiBono?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Jermaine? Trahill?
Here.
Ogletr?
Here.
Flaimson?
Here.
Riego? Here. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda as stated? I need a motion to approve the agenda. So, Shu? Move second?
Second.
DiBono seconded. Call the vote, please. DiBono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Ogletr?
Yes.
Flaimson?
Yes.
Riego? Yes. Item three, A Jacobs annual report presentation. It's under items for policy items and staff reports. Council's got a brochure. Mayor, we'd like to bring forward Lawrence Sanna-Stevan from Jacobs to give the report.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Lawrence Sanna-Stevan.
Please speak into the microphone.
Oh, sorry. My name's Lawrence Sanna-Stevan. I'm here representing Jacobs and I'm doing our annual report for for the city of Trinidad Jacobs that we you guys. And this is just an overview of last agenda that we have gone through halls for the whole year. Team that brings in 190 years, 91 years of combined experience for the city of Trinidad. Name's off words. I've been there 30 years and I just became the project manager. Jerry Wilson that just left. And this just has our data that we've done all year. How much line lines we've had cleaned. This one has its four months because our jet back was down for four months. So we're a little short, but we're gonna try to make that up this year. And thank you for voting for the new jet back. Appreciate that. Hopefully I'll get that back here at the end of October, beginning of November. That's actually been done. Meaning to be a factor up here next week or two to just check our progress for that. Everybody? Pretty much just goes over samples we've taken and our community highlights and has a page that introduces me as the project manager. And our community service that we do around the community here helping. We do the Trinidad Water Festival. We also buy the flags for Simpson Dress that we donate to the local Alx Lodge. We buy two flags a year for that. So, and we did have a problem with that when it broke down. I know we took a lot of hits on chatter for that, but we just couldn't get up there to change it because the cable's afraid. And we needed a bucket truck that was, city's only goes 50 feet. That was a 70-foot pole. So we had to get one from San Isabelle, which one the hundred foot. But that's been fixed. But that's where the fight's come from for the rest. From Jacobs. And we also do the Riverwalk camp. We have a couple guys that come out to the Riverwalk. And do that. And this year we actually sponsored the Santa Fe Trail Festival. So we do a lot of stuff in the community. And this is my report that I sent to you guys. If you have any questions, open any questions that you have that Jacobs does.
Aaron, we'll start with you.
Congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you all. You do a professional job watching over sewer and we appreciate all of you.
Thank you.
Lawrence, thank you as well. You can't achieve much better than 100% compliance, so. Shoot for 100 chance.
Yes, yeah, we found out a few issues that we had on our review system and we got that taken care of. And so far this year we have not had any non-compliance or equally there. It's been coming back. That's where we were having problems, but we got that issue.
Congratulations. Keep up the great work. Yes, absolutely.
Same thing. I appreciate your work. The guys do a really good job. And congratulations to you and and to all the guys that work. They all do a great job. Thank you.
Same thing. Thank you so much.
Lawrence, thank you and congratulations. I have no questions, Mayor.
I'm glad to. I never realized how involved you were with community service.
Yes.
So now when people go on Trinidad chatter and complain about that, I want your cellphone number. And I'll post it on Facebook so that
Well, I'm part of the Alx Club, so I, so I, you know.
So you're
I identify as permanent company.
I'm just kidding.
Yes, we just, it just something in the wind. It's so bad. It's been bad this year.
And people don't realize how bad the the wind is up on
That's how it is. And it's another 70-foot pole, so.
Yeah, it's bad. Well, thank you. I never realized how involved Jacobs was with the
Yeah, they tried to be a lot. And also this year I also sponsored a little banner on back of Primera's football team. Sponsored the football team and the athletes Primera High School, so. Trying to reach out, work to the community and do more stuff around the community, get our Jacobs name out there.
All right, sir. Thank you. Is there no more questions? Okay.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Lawrence Sanna-Stevan. Item three, B on policy items and staff reports, the summer reading program.
Thank you, Mayor. We'd like to bring forward Ms. Jessica Huffman to provide this report on the library.
Thank you. If I ever feel bad about myself, I should just ask what?
That's right. That's right.
A round of applause.
That's right. Fan number one. Yeah, you're just
Good evening, everyone. I already read for summer reading. So we started registration on Friday, February 30th. Our goal is 125 kids registered. Last year we had 108. Before I left the office today, we had 37 already registered. So we use an online platform called ReadSquirt. It's the fourth year that we've used it. So people can register their applications remotely. If they don't have it in town, they don't have it in the library, it may be as easy as possible. So I'm excited. I think we're near our goal. Our kickoff event is June 11th, which is going to be the fall party. Unless some, maybe three years in a row, maybe at Trinidad, we'll have two sessions at 10 o'clock and then a 12:30, so we can get as many people as we can over there. We will also have sweet treats, the snow cone, the snow cone van will be parked there so the kids can get some snow cones. Another big event is July 12th. We'll have a color run. We're partnering with Southern Colorado Family Center. So What is his name? I wrote it down.
Paul Trigl.
No, Lex Anamus Grill. We're gonna start there. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. He lets, he's gonna let us start there. And then he's also gonna provide hot dogs, lemonade, and water as supplies for the kids.
Nice.
So one of the things I'd like to point out is the big events are only able to be done because the friends of the library is paying for them. So all of those big things that are high ticket, they'll pay for them. That helps. That really helps. So if anyone wants to go buy these books, please. And the next one is the prizes are pretty local. We don't do a lot of prizes, but we will hand out certificates to go get our free ice cream at Little Rox's Ice Cream. And then yeah, maybe 800 coins will get us a movie ticket for 30 years. We do pay for those, so they're, but we just wanna make sure that we kind of send them around. Then our story walk just got put up in Central Park. And it goes with our theme, which is "In Our World." It's Ain't Gonna Paint No More by Karen Huma. It's a walk you need it. It's adorable. It's my favorite story. And then we have our experience passes that started for this. We have our pool passes, which we give for free to go to the pool. They are being street ride and then the triggers ticket. So you get two tickets. You get two tickets for every game. And those are made possible by a grant, state grant, and then also donation by Red Renewables. The sand is a bell schooler. I think that's it. I think there are any other things that pass. Done.
Questions?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica, for the candid, informative interview last week at the university.
Thank you. Thank you. She won't hurt it. Glad. We're like, oh my God, thank you. Thank you for having me.
You're welcome.
And thank you for what you do. Doing a really good job.
Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate you so much for doing some of the work, maybe. Keep some busy during the summer, too. Thank you so much a lot.
Again, I just want to say thank you. The library under your leadership is exactly what a library is supposed to be for our community, so. Thank you so much for what you
I have a suggestion. Next year, after the kids are done, we should do a senior citizen reading program. Cause I know I might do that stuff, but I'm not within the age of 17.
So we do have, we have a waiting program for adults. So it starts in January and we run it through March.
Okay.
We do have what we, and so then we focus on the adults during the, when the kids are in school, they've got teachers. And it's waiters, so you should be sitting by your on the couch or the books.
You should be. Yes. No, thank you. You know, somebody already said would turn around the library business under your leadership and it's wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
It's one of the big fan.
Thank you so much, Jessica. Thank you.
Item four, petitions or communications oral or written. If you want to speak, you must sign in. There is only a five-minute time limitation. You'll be warned when there is one minute left. We ask that you speak to, stick to the time limitation, especially when there are a lot of people. Here's not. But anyway. Is this you, Tom?
Yep.
Man, you're handwriting this.
I know.
Please go right ahead. I just need to get back, you know, where the battery is. I think this is tough. For my father.
Funeral election. Good evening, Mayor, staff, and all. So for the record, the people who are watching and don't know me, I'm Tom Murphy on the role. I'm Murphy, Colonel Trinidad, and I'm Stevie in another venture that's about to happen. I wanted to let you know, and I know Karen already knows this, on June 10th, we're having a funeral for Oris Nessus. He was killed in action in the early 1950s in the Korean War. And they recently were able to do a DNA match. And they found that his family, and his family's still here. And so he's gonna be returned to Trinidad. We won't know until June 10th, what day exactly he's gonna be coming in. We're assuming that it's gonna be into DIA. There was a funeral last year for a gentleman, Mr. Strickland in Pueblo, and he had 50 or 60 motorcycles escorting. And I've had numerous conversations with people that are part of this and were kind of anticipating the same thing. It's gonna be a procession from DIA to Trinidad on one of these days. It's pot, I'll get to that later, but the funeral is gonna be on, on the 20th at 1:00 PM. We would like to get a head count for those elected officials that would like to be on attendance. I'm expecting a full house. There's 50 or 60 family members. We could have 20 or 30 military. I've gotten calls from all over the state of people, military, that want to participate. This is a big deal for people that serve in the military in returning his remains. And so as delegates, if whoever, if Tara would communicate with me as elected officials and I reached out to the county commissioners to say, hey, give me a head count so they can reserve space for you, I think, as elected officials. You know, we certainly should have a delegation representing the city. And so please let me know on that. I'm expecting if the motorcycles are here during the thing, the, there's gonna be a bit of traffic issue and I'll address it. Tara, I have some solutions because we're going straight from my place to the cemetery. It's possible. I don't know the guy's last name, but Big Tony was here. He's served 30 years in the military. He came down this morning to kind of lay things out. It's possible we're even gonna have a flyover, a military flyover. The paperwork is in. And so they're, this is, they're going all out. And we're gonna livestream it, so if you can't be there, you'll be able to watch on the channel. And so just give me a head count and let me know that you want to participate. And we'll probably want to coordinate, too, traffic. Because if we have all these motorcycles and everything else, it's gonna be a lot of, a lot of people. The second thing is there's an election this fall. And the deadline is just, the adra is August 25th. And the mail-in ballots go out October 3rd. The chamber used to do the meet the candidates, but I did one in the most recent thing, and we're gonna do it again. I'm gonna try to get one-on-one interviews done. And then before October 3rd, because I think the election is almost over in some people's minds and they made a decision, once the mail-in ballots go out. So I want to get this done in September at some point. As soon as, as soon as this deadline comes up, I'm gonna start asking people to sit down with me. I interview people individually and then, and then I release it all at the same time. So that I can ask basically the same questions. So I'm kind of anticipating there's a lot of seats open. I'm kind of anticipating that there might be a lot of people running. I think people are interested again. And, and I think that's a good thing. So, and then, and then just the last thing. Karen, you know, there's a lot of coffee talk in Trinidad. It's just rumors. I'm just saying, this is what people are saying. So you don't have to respond to this, but the rumor in town is that you've got the cops and the courts in your pocket. You just spread the city charter and cancel the local elections and stay in power for another eight years. So I'm just it's just what people are saying. I just thought I'd give you a heads up. It's just, you know, Trinidad is true, maybe it's not. Who knows? So just thought I'd give you a heads up.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate it. I didn't know I was gonna do that, but now that you told me.
Well, that's for the handwriting.
That's why his handwriting is so bad. Our next speaker is Rory Mitchell. And I No, I'm sorry. It's Rory Miller. And he wants to talk about road repairs.
Yeah, I brought that in the last couple meetings back up there at my lovely Cougar Canyon. That fine 110-room convention center, Jet Nicholson Golf Course, and our Questy Wright Stables. Anyway, ah, they tore that one area out. I gave you the picture last time. And nothing's been done since then. And I can see where the water is undermined and asphalt, so eventually it's gonna cave in. Hopefully my truck's not going on it when it does. The other side is still backed up. Somebody always goes around the backed up water to go on the other side of the road where it's caving in. I'm just telling you from what I know, personal experience. And then the other one is a whole mess out there. They put down two inches of asphalt. They fell apart. And they got cracks in the roads and all that. It's coming apart quite readily. It's been 17 years old, so it's lasted quite well, actually. For what it is. I know we got puddles out here. One over here by the bridge, I can get there with my truck. So I realized the city's got puddle problems. You know, but I just wondered if they're gonna do anything with that. Someone stole my sandbag out there, too. It's like, yeah, you know, sandbags are tough, you know, all the same and all. The other question I had is the other day, somebody put this in my post office box. He's trying to sell like 90 acres out there. I don't know if he can sell it or not. I guess he owns it. It was quite a little, he wants to sell his land out there. And I guess it's, as you turn at the Cougar, you go up the hill, it's that hillside is what he owns. And he's got the pond on the bottom of it. He says it's his pond. Anyway, I don't know what he wants for it. I have no plans to buy it. But at one time, they were gonna sell the lots off at auction out there. And I was getting interested in bidding a lot next to me, cause I put a garage up or something, or, you know, garden or some damn thing. But it all fell apart when new command came in. No one's doing anything at the Cougar Canyon as far as I'm concerned. But, and I talked to the other mayor, Longway and Rico. He said it's gonna run between 30,000 to 40,000 bucks just to figure out who owns what up there. Who, you know, who did what to whom up there in that debacle. Okay? But if you were to spend that kind of money, figure out who did what to whom, maybe he's auctioned those lots off and makes, you make your money back. Cause there's 400 lots up there. Only built 20 houses. 420 that resigned. Only 40, 20 houses were built. There's a lot of open lots up there, a lot of housing areas still up there to be developed. I don't know where we're at with any of that, but if you was to pursue that, I'm sure he can sell those lots off. But at 17 years of back taxes, I'm not gonna pay no $50 bucks back taxes on the lot. It ain't gonna happen. You know, some rich guy might do it, but you know. I don't know. It's just a mess up there. And at one time, they were gonna do something with that 110-room convention center, but it's beyond repair now. My thing to do with it would be have a large, buy all the fire harsen, have a large structural fire, training events. It'd be perfect for that. Or you might be able to salvage some of the wood out of it, sell it off. Still some good wood in there. You know, wood costs, middle game, right? But anyway, I don't know what y'all plan on doing with that, but it's been 17 years now. The whole thing fell apart in 2008. With that Freddie Mae family back debacle took place with the housing crash and all that. So they were leaving, they were running, the rest of them were sick and ship. So I don't know what y'all plan to do with it. The hotel's about three quarters done before they abandoned ship on that. But nothing's been done with it since I've been there. Nothing. The city does all of it. It's been the city limits. In fact, back in the day, they put the, put a big B around it to incorporate it into city limits because the city's gonna tax the hell out of it. That's, that's gonna be a cash cow for Trinidad. They couldn't spend the money fast enough. You know how that all fell apart? Huh?
One minute left.
Okay, yeah, I'll shut up. I didn't mean to say that. Okay. But anyway, that's where I'm at. I was kind of wondering if you guys have any plans at all for that fabulous Cougar Canyon? What are you planning on doing with that mess out there? Some of the hazmat's still there from the old paint jugs and all that. Just left everything. Never was cleaned up. Scapula's still there. It's all still there. When they abandoned ship. Come on, take a guy to tour. I can take the other guy to tour. I'm well versed on that area. Me and the dog walk it all the time. The alien spaceship fly by, it's great. It's really great up there. Okay, thanks. Thank you so much.
Mr. Miller, could you leave your, Mr. Miller, could you leave your phone number or email on the sheet?
Yes.
I, it's not very good, but I'll give you my phone number and email.
There you go.
Send your orientation and all that stuff.
We'll be good.
Okay.
Thank you.
And write under the tongue move. That guy.
Thank you. This way I'll be able to get in touch with you. Thank you so much.
Sorry.
That's okay. We're good.
The next speaker is leading, if you want to talk about a new business.
I'll wait.
Thank you. Later, later.
Probably come up with a good one, man.
That's a good one.
Thank you.
Thanks for the good sir.
My name's Liam Gully, and I appreciate y'all's time. This is something I've been looking into for about a year. To make sure all the legalities and everything of it, it's good or good. Tried to come up with a catchy name. And what we do is I'm sole proprietor, trying to get big enough that I can bring my children on. I've got four kids. And make it a family business. But what we do is any nuisance animal, you know, I'm not gonna chase down a bear mount lion in the middle of the street. But raccoons, boxers, scum, spot cats, snakes, any, any small ornament that, that needs on, I will do my best to come and, come and get it out of anybody's property that needs it gone. That being said, I have gone through Eric Slater out of the State Department, State DOW up at Denver. I've been in close contact with Bob Holder, as well as Adam Fidell, our, our local DOW agents. I am licensed, insured, both through DOW, through the city of Trinidad, under this business name. And I just, I'm here tonight just to introduce myself, let you guys know that, that I'm here if, if the city needs help, if individuals that you know of need help. Just feel free to email, call, shoot me a text, get ahold of me, throw something at my car while I'm going down the road. I'll pull up. And if, that's, that's all I had. Just, just a quick introduction. Any questions from any of y'all, I'll be more than happy to answer.
We can't, we can't interact with you right now. It's, this portion is just for you to speak to us.
My apologies.
No, that's all right. Not a problem. Does the city have this information?
Yes, Mayor.
In case Chief Backrack or Chief Tahanavich wants to get ahold of you.
I will let him know right now, but the, the local chief, I haven't been able to sit down with the chief. I have talked to several police officers trying to get ahold of him. I just haven't been able to make that happen yet.
William, I'll follow up with you and we'll get a meeting with both chiefs.
I'd much appreciate that. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item five, council reports. Mr. Williams.
We did have, we did have a council governance meeting. To be honest, there was nothing so urgent as the, we announced we're done. I did, I did want to say, hearing what Mr. Murphy said about Mr. Oris' Nessus returned to Trinidad, Colorado, I think where and how it would be appropriate, I really think we should look into working with the military's recommendations, those agencies that are used to this. And I think we should help make it as dignified as we possibly can and potentially commemorative as we possibly can. And the ideas that come to mind are when the streets are lined with flags, that's awfully nice. I forget what agency does that. If appropriate, it might be really nice to have the fire truck set up with a large flag if, if that's possible for entering the Trinidad. But I do think it would be important to work with agencies that are familiar with this sort of situation so that it's done tastefully and in honor of his service and his return.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Trigil?
May 22nd, May 23rd has been a lot of time with Tom. We had the two-day opiate, what is it called? It's kind of hard to say. It's a opiate use and disorder summit that we actually hosted for the first time this year. It's gonna hopefully become an annual thing that we can end up. It's very informational. Commissioner Lopez had put that together as a result of the, of the opiate lawsuit. I apologize entirely. I just got it on plane. He put that together. So using those funds to come to the area to bring knowledge and education to us and our area that we just have not had enough interest that has come down here from, from the north. We had people from Denver, Denver Pueblo, Colorado Springs, some from the, from the western slope. We had some from the eastern slope that had come over to share their ideas on what's going on, problems in their community. Our interim chief Tahanavich spent two days with us as well there. His input was great. And I'm so glad he was there to be able to shed some light on some of the problems that we have in our area, which I think we're overlooking. It really, it was eye-opening. County Health Director Kim Gonzalez brought in some statistics that were really, really, really disheartening. And it's, it's really scary when you look at our community through that window. I think by getting that education out there and us attending these and having these more often, I think we can start working with youth a lot more, maybe trying to get a handle on some of the problems that we do have in the area. And that would help lessen some of the unfortunate things that are actually going on in our area. If you want to look at any of the information, it is all on Trinidad Times TV. So the two-day summons were on there. Also, there, the PowerPoint slides are all completely available for anybody that wants to see that information. We have, we share those with anyone. Also, because Bank Chamber is planning the chili festival. So we're getting ready to start that going for September. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Shu?
We, with Tara and Dave and Minda, we attended the opera meeting down in Mahana. And Guzman, which takes care of our electricity now, they gave a slight summary of their company, which sounds pretty sound and they're trying to get more business. And they seem to be doing well. So looks like we're kind of set real good with that. And really, other than that, that was nothing really.
Everything's good?
Yep. Very good.
Riego, do you have anything to read?
Yeah, just a few things. The, there was a Veterans Coffee Social last Wednesday for Champions Building on The, there was a Veterans Coffee Social last Wednesday for Champions Building on Commercial Street. That was for all veterans, the family members. They also served tea, it was compliments of kangaroo coffee on Commercial Street. And as, like, just gonna piggyback on what Tom stated, I did an interview with Jack Byes. He's the great uncle of Oris Nestus, who's gonna be honored in June. Uh, Linda Barrett was also there. And, uh, it was a great interview, and it's gonna be something really momentous for Trinidad and the surrounding area.
Ms. Ogletree?
Thank you. Um, one of the roles that I get to play, that I'm honored to play as I served on the advisory council for the college for Trinidad City. And we had our advisory council meeting, and Dr. Epper has brought on a couple new people who are just really exciting in terms of economic development connections. One of them is a gentleman who was the former ED in Walsauburg. And one of them works for San Isabelle, is like the local general manager of San Isabelle. Um, but also, another person who serves on it is Kathy Woods, who's the ED out at, in Alamosa. And we had a really constructive conversation, because the college wants to be more a part of our economic development in Trinidad, and we're working with them on the emergent campus. But it was a really helpful conversation, and Kathy Woods wants to meet with you, Tara, at your earliest opportunity. I think we can learn a lot from Alamosa. Alamosa is now, they went from a time when they had a bunch of, um, storefronts that were just boarded over to now they're having trouble finding places for businesses to locate. And I just took that to be really encouraging news. Um, went to the Triggers opener on Sunday, and it was spectacular. It was, the field looked so good, and it just makes, I think it makes Trinidad look so good. Um, for the families and the visitors, the guests who are there, which I was really proud of. And I was recalling how much hard work Steve Rigger put into shepherding that along, and I just wanted to give them enough, because it's, it's a, a great facility now.
And they won, right?
Yeah, they won the opener, I heard they lost last night.
I heard they lost in the night.
Anyways, and then the creative district meeting was postponed, 'cause they couldn't afford to invite home. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing to report, I'm a slacker of the deep. You don't wanna listen to me, because I got place setting everybody under my thumb, and I can do whatever. It's all good, you know? Okay. Item six, consent agenda approval. Six A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of May twenty-five. Item B, approval of a temporary modification of premises application filed by DJ's Park Day LLC during business at six oh eight Arizona Avenue, I see this way you're heading. Six C, approval of bills totaling four million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and eighty-one cents. I have to explain some of the line items on this bill, these bills, because it was last, last, uh, meeting, it was only, it wasn't even half a million. But to, uh, explain the large amount of expenditures, two point eight million came from a raised grant that we expended. ADA access, fifty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Monument Lake improvements, ninety-eight thousand. And I think this is the water tank rehab project for four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So if anybody's paying attention to those expenditures, that's why this, this time around is larger than usual. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Shu moved, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ogletree seconded, call the vote, please.
Tabano?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes. Item seven, a major impact application for a major subdivision known as Estates Rancho Duran, filing one. A public hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending the zone classification of a parcel of land containing one hundred and seventy-eight point four acres loaded and located in section twenty-five, township thirty-three, south range sixty-four west of the six principal meridians, city of Trinidad, county of Los Anamis, state of Colorado, from planned unit development to residential estate, medium-density residential, high-density residential, community commercial, and open. The hearing is now open. Hi, Mr. Mason, how are you?
Good, how's everyone doing?
Good.
Um, so this is the last time on this, I know you guys are getting a little worn out on some of these, but, uh, so, uh, this is for the major subdivision known as Estates Rancho Duran, filing one. Um, in total, it is a re-plat and a re-zone of one hundred and seventy-eight point four acres. Um, but phase one is the only thing that's getting land use approvals. Um, so there's four lots located along Ors Canyon Road. About previous couple meetings, we worked on making sure the vacating, the Ors Canyon Road was cleaned up for this, so now, now that's definitely been along with this. Um, the zoning for those four lots is going to be residential states, it is four point three nine acres. Um, and as I said, phase two, which is the rest of the, it's the balance of the, um, plat, is not getting land use approvals, so for anything going to happen in there, you're gonna have to come back and go through the process again for plating, um, re-zoning if necessary. Um, uh, there's two tracts of land in the first phase that's going to, um, be the open space dedication. Uh, I think that's for planned, uh, trail usage in the future. Um, the four lots are getting city water, gas, and power, and they're moving on septic due to the location being too far away from the sewer line as well, it being uphill and, um, a really big strain on the sewer line for only having four, four houses on it. Um, for the re-zone, the, the, like I said, phase one only is residential state. Um, it's residential state of Long Morse Canyon. But the balance of the rest of the property, the bigger piece of property, has, does have several different zoning, um, which includes, uh, medium-density residential, um, high-density residential, community commercial, and open. Um, and that's just, it, they, it kinda went off worth of Safeway Trail, community commercial on Safeway Trail, followed behind by high-density, followed behind by medium-density, and then actually the rest of it is more of the residential state where they're taking their lots. Um, it's just kind of a preliminary stab of their plan, they don't know exactly what the plan's gonna look like, um, what their future plans look like, but that's just kind of a preliminary layout of their, of their development. Um, that's all I have. I guess I went through it a couple times, so I don't know if you guys... I'm retiring, to be honest with you. But, yeah, yeah. Any questions you guys have?
Anything?
So, when they go to phase two re-zoning, they'll have to go to planning zoning and variance commission?
Yeah, same process, we've been running through, we have planning commission. Um, we'll see about the concept review prior to planning commission. You guys might be like, okay, we're, we're pretty familiar, Nick. Don't bring it to us every week, we'll see about that. Uh, and then planning commission and, uh, or organs change, so it'll be two meetings in the council.
So I, I had some comments from people who live in the area that just wanna stay on top of what's going on and have some input if, if they're...
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be full public process. Public noticing, everything like that.
Okay. Um, I noticed as I was looking at the staff report at section fourteen thirty-seven on public land dedication, there's a missing, just wanted to know, uh, what the missing number of acres is that will be required, uh, public land dedication. If you look at paragraph three and then the bullet point, it says public land dedication requirement for this subdivision is approximately, and then it doesn't matter.
Oh, no.
Acres, so I just wonder, what is it?
Um, give me one second, I have a calculator. It is point six six acres. Um, I don't know, the applicant is here, do you remember how much you guys dedicated just?
Slightly over fifteen percent.
Yeah, I know it's slightly over, I think it was like point six eight or even point seven, I think. So, it involved, it was kinda, 'cause when you get some point, you just work with it, but they did, I noticed as well, it was over. Um, yeah, they, they, it was supposed to be point six six acre, acres though.
I just wanted that to be in there somehow, so that's it.
Eli?
No questions. No questions. Nothing yet. No questions.
I have none, so thank you. Anybody to speak for or against the ordinance amending the zone classifications? There'll be one. The hearing is closed. Item seven B I, second reading of an ordinance amending the zone classification. A part of a parcel of land contains one hundred and seventy-eight point four acres loaded, located in section twenty-five, township thirty-three, south, range sixty-four west of the six principal meridians, city of Trinidad, county of Los Anamis, state of Colorado, from planned unit development to residential estate, medium-density residential, high-density residential, community commercial, and open. I need a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Shu, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Trippier? Seconded, call the vote, please.
Tabano?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes. Ram, now you gotta get to work, but...
Thank you.
Item eight, unfinished business, there is none. Item nine, miscellaneous business. Item nine A, consideration of conveyance.
Mayor, may we, may we take a moment to finish the conversation in the galley?
Thank you.
Consideration, item nine A, consideration of conveyance of one sixty-five East First Street to the city of Trinidad. I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to table this item, but seeking further information.
There is a motion to table item nine A to the next committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shu seconded, call the vote, please.
Uh, mayor? We're calling the vote, can I please get some clarification on exactly what you want me to bring forward as further information? If we're tabling it for further information, I just wanna clear...
We're tabling it for further information, to see if there's any other options
And we got...
to remedy that.
Tax information.
Yeah.
Tax information, yep.
And hopefully some kind of estimate of the cost for the city. We played the cost for the city, they accept the question.
Estimate of cost? Tax information?
Yes.
And options?
Yes. See, I'm sorry, we did say probable remediation cost?
Yes.
Testing? I think that's what estimation of cost was.
Okay, I, I just didn't hear, and to include, uh, I would assume that's to include testing?
Okay.
And then, uh, mayor, if I may, I, I just wanted to, uh, thank you, Mr. Downs, for all the work he has done on this. And I acknowledge, uh, sometimes it's like herding cats, I'm sure. But, uh, I would like to acknowledge that, uh, your very, uh, steadfast desire to maintain Trinidad's exposure to liability, so I want, I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Now go ahead and kill one. Just kidding, just kidding.
The motion on the floor is to table line A, consideration of conveyance of one sixty-five East First Street to the city of Trinidad. We have a motion and a second. Call the vote, please. Tabano?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes. Item nine B, consideration of an appointment, the plant, to the planning, zoning, and variance commission. We have one applicant, Paul Materano. We interviewed him at the last work session. So I need a motion to appoint Mr. Materano to planning zoning?
So moved.
Is that you, Mr. Tabo?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Shu seconded, call the vote, please. Tabano?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Aren't, sorry, Trehal?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes. Item nine C, consideration of appointments to the Corazon de Trinidad Historic Main Street Board. We have two, uh, applicants. Ashley Bryan has requested appointment as a new appointee. And the second individual is Megan Crish, who is asking for re-appointment to the Corazon de Trinidad Historic Main Street Board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Trehal motioned, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ogletree seconded, call the vote, please. Tabano?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes. Item nine D, consideration of appointment to the Lodging Tax Advisory Board. We had one applicant that had no specific desire to go to one board or the other. And during her vetting process, we asked her if she would be willing to join with the LTAP board, and she has kindly agreed. So I need a motion to appoint Kyle Wagner to the LTAP board?
So moved.
Ms. Ogletree's moved, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tabo seconded, call the vote, please.
Tabano?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes. Item ten, reports by the city manager and city of Trinidad.
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of thank yous. Um, as Councilmember Trippier had mentioned, I wanted to thank interim chief Mike Tahanovich for attending the opioid conference for the two days and representing city staff. Um, also, just to remind you, as Chris Huffman had presented, the summer reading programs kicking off. We're excited about that. Um, we're also most excited for Santa Fe Trail Days, which is coming up. Couple of things I'd like you to know, we have a cleanup this Friday on the sixth of June. And we're taking any volunteers, so if you have interest to come and help us clean up the area, um, just record in here at City Hall, and we'll direct you to how you can help. Also, I wanna remind councilmen, I've mentioned this in previous reports, that City Hall will be inaccessible to walking in, you can walk in, but to driving and parking on Friday the thirteenth. We'll be shutting off Animus Street, and the parking lot therefore won't be accessible by Animus. Uh, but we will be open, so we'll be here, we'll be answering the phones, we can be assisting, um, customers on that Friday. Santa Fe Trail Days kicks off that evening at six o'clock. The entertainment will be Whiskey Creek, so that's exciting, on Friday night. Um, Saturday, we will open at ten AM, we're gonna have entertainment all day long, and a closing at six PM with Alpera Canyon, so that's, we're anticipating a very big draw. I wanna thank our city clerk's office. Um, Ms. Audrey Garrett, Ms. Kimberly Lopez, and Ms. Felicia...
Trey.
I kept saying wrong one. Uh, have secured sixty-two vendors for, uh, Santa Fe Trail Days. Um, keep in mind, that's a real revenue generator, so I wanna thank them for all their hard work and, um, also how they're, um, they've minded all the entertainment. So we will take any volunteers for that Friday, or that Saturday as well. Um, okay, it's thirty days today that I've been here with you. So yay, it's my first thirty days. Um, just a couple highlights. I've met with almost all city departments, and I've toured all city-run locations. I've met with one hundred and sixty-three employees. Um, meetings in finance, utility billing, development services, gas, power and line, water, welcome center, library, space to create animal shelter, community center, public works, lead engineering, landfill, fire department, police department, and dispatch. I think the only ones I haven't met with are IT and the clerks. But I can't meet with the clerks right now, 'cause they're so busy doing Santa Fe Trail Days. So, I'll meet with them at the festival. Um, that's just a little humor. Starting to play in there. Nobody laughs, I thought maybe I...
We now know her. Oh, you sue her?
I could have less, I'm just a class, class lunch. Um, I started union outreach, so I've completed meet and greets with all three unions. Attended the Summit of Governments hosted by the city of Ritoome today. Um, attended CML district meeting previous weeks with councilmember Trippier. Attended ARBA this last week with councilmember Shu, along with, um, Ms. Beal and Mr. Batichov. Um, met with all eighteen, drew... Met with all eighteen direct reports and many of the subsequent staff that run important and critical services. Helped one-on-one meetings with each member of city council. And I just wanted to announce that in the month of May, we welcomed four new full-time employees. We welcomed, uh, Cassie Coleman, our HR manager. Uh, Kyle Too Good, he's a returning firefighter who had his first shift this month. And this week, Brody Trieho in our gas department was another returned employee, so we're excited. And of course, I'm the fourth one, so I'll try to make sense of myself, see if I have humor that. Um, let's see, I've lost my voice, as you've noticed, so all those meetings. Um, we've also welcomed thirty-two seasonal employees who are up and running as of this last week. So we really put our new HR manager, Cassie, through the wringer in this first month, onboarding all these seasonal employees. They're working in various departments such as pools and public works. Um, as it kick off the next thirty days, I'll be out meeting with our boards and commissions, local and regional stakeholders, and beginning of policy work we've been discussing. To that end, I, I want to just pull you and let you know, we are planning on canceling the work session for next Monday and giving you the day off. Instead, we're going to have, um, pretty, pretty full work sessions on June twenty-third and July fourteenth. Planning to bring forward, um, you may remember Clay Creek, Clay Creek, um, solar farm. Uh, they were here, Rick Rigo was here in February and did a work session with you. Rick is gonna come back and do a real quick refresher on June twenty-fourth because you're gonna see that lease agreement and the transmission agreement on the agenda early July. We're also gonna be bringing forward a lodging tax discussion on, uh, June twenty-third. And those meetings start with the lodgers in the next week. And then we'll be bringing forward back the, uh, portion of the river ordinance, the first of the two ordinance as well. So please enjoy next Monday, no work session. We'll have, um, as a subsequent, we'll have a fairly light agenda on the seventeenth. Then we'll hit the ground running on the twenty-third with some of these new policy items as we're transitioning from most of the open business Mr. Valentine had to most of the open business that we'll be bringing forward in the future. And then finally, I wanted to let you know, or remind you, that the recruitment firm we engaged, ARW, for the police chief's search are in town Wednesday and Thursday. So we are expecting when they finish this visit doing focus groups, that the middle of the next week, so the second week in June, we will have the position posted. I did have a conversation with the recruiters today, they've already started outreach. Even though we have it posted and we have some interested folks, so looking forward to seeing how that goes. And that's what I had, if you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Downs?
I feel like such an underachiever. So, Mayor and council members, I wanted to tell you that we're going to be, um, doing the board and commission training, um, in, in the near future. Ms. Marshall and I are going to be doing that. You may recall that when you reconstituted the Trinidad Housing Authority, we assured you that we were going to be doing training for boards and commissions. And we're going to be doing that in the near future. I want to say, I'm not sure exactly what it's going to look like. I think we may go and do this for the Trinidad Housing Authority specifically because that is such a different hybrid kind of animal. Beyond that, I'm not sure if we'll do it the way we've done it before. You know, historically, when we have all the boards and commissions coming together, it may be better to do like a, you know, a training for a couple of boards at a time. And it'd be able to sit down and have more, uh, ton, fewer people, more questions and, and be able to do that without such a large group. I think it's kind of hard, you know, to really talk and get a lot of good questions from people. But I just want to let you know, we'll be doing that, Ms. Marshall and I are gonna be planning that. And the first one will be the Trinidad Housing Authority since that was something that we presumed we would be doing. That, that needed to be done, and especially since that's an entirely new whole. Uh, I'm sorry we haven't done it before now. But anyway, that is the only thing. Sorry.
All right, thank you. Item one, eleven is adjournment, I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Shu motioned, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ogletree seconded, call the vote please. Devono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trehal?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes. Thank you all, have a wonderful rest of your year.